Hi.
Hi.
I want pretzels and they don't have it here.
Yes, there are pretzels.
How you doing?
They're really cute little pretzels with bats and cats on them.
Oh my goodness.
She's got the Halloween ones just.
Before we get to start, I'm gonna embarrass some people here that are here from American Government class. One young lady I've known since she was a fifth or sixth grade, fourth grade.
Fifth grade.
Fourth grade, so I've known this young lady a long time. And then, who wants to introduce yourself?
I'm Renee Johnson.
Awesome.
I'm CJ Johnson.
Awesome. You guys are forced to be here for American Government? Sort of like, you guys are like, yes.
Well, I was here as county commissioners and uh...
We're much more excited.
Oh yeah, a lot more fun.
There's lots of cool stuff to go on in here. Well, welcome, we're glad you guys are here.
Pretzels shake a lot of lives.
Okay, so I was told that last week's meeting was fantastic and amazing, so I kinda got a little bit hurt by that because I was gone. So I felt like I was very much not appreciated.
Step your game up.
So if anybody would... So if anybody would like to, um, don't extol any...
I missed you.
Yeah, we missed you, Ray. It wasn't all the same without you.
Bad, that sounds completely forced. It's good to be back, um, sorry I missed last week, but um, it's good to be back and Bruce did a fantastic job, so I'm really appreciative of that. All right, um, let's go ahead and get started, Life Jacket Program update, Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, good evening, everybody. Um, this is an item that we put on the agenda pursuant to your request to get kind of a debriefing as it relates to the Life Jacket Program and, and our involvement with river safety and, and those kinds of things, and so we wanted to give you the opportunity to hear some of that data now that we're kind of past Life Jacket season in the, in the community. And give the, the Fire Department the opportunity to kind of give us some of that insight, and so if I could defer to the Chief, Deputy Chief, whatever you got in mind.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Yeah, so, this, this was kind of supported by questions on enforcement's capabilities to make sure that people are wearing life jackets in our waterways. And, uh, you know, the answer is no, we cannot enforce people to wear life jackets in our waterways. But I didn't want to get up here and just say, no, we can't do that, that's no. I wanted to take this opportunity to kind of educate on our Life Jacket Program and, and, and kind of inform people on what we've been doing and, and what, what is available out there. The Wyoming Gaming Fish Department, they're the ones that enforce wearing of life jackets on our waterways. And so, the firefighters and Fire Department has no jurisdiction in doing that. That's in their wheelhouse and they look at enforcement on watercraft. So, a lot of the things that we see in our waterways, tubes, toys, things like that, they do not consider those things watercraft. So, you know, they, they can't say, hey, you're on a tube, you're not wearing a life jacket. It's just not, not something they can do. But what we can do as the Fire Department and as a community is to educate our community on safety and the need to make sure that we always, always, always wear life jackets when we're in that water. We're trained professionals as a Fire Department and that stuff is scary to be in that water, even when you have the training to make sure that you're safe in it. And so, typical citizens that they don't have the training and don't understand how dangerous that water is, it, uh, it's a real concern. So, I pulled some of our data over the last couple of years on what we respond to. From 2019 until now, we've responded to fifty-six different incidents in our waterways in the community of Casper. And that, that's a pretty alarming number. As you can see in the different years, we have different responses, different incidents that we respond to. So it's a real concern that we want to make sure we're educating and preventing any mishaps from happening to anybody in our community.
Chief, while you're on there, may I ask a question? Um, do you know how many of those incidents included non-life jacket-wearing people?
That, that is not a data point that we're collecting at this point.
Okay.
But, in our prevention division, we've had discussions with that, that it might be valid to start tracking that just so we have those numbers in the future. So, I know there's a, there's a lot of reports where, you know, in the, in the narrative, they'll say they were wearing life jackets or not, but there's no way to go back through and say, hey, twenty of these people are wearing life jackets or not. But that's a good point, I think we're gonna be working in that direction. So, recognizing the need, the Fire Department has seen this as a big need since nineteen ninety-nine. Now Battalion Chief Jack Moore, he actually spearheaded our Life Jacket Program. He saw the need and he saw the need for prevention, he started out at Station Six by getting donations of life jackets and spreading the word that you could come in, check them out, go use them on the river, and bring them back in. The program grew and by two thousand four, every station in the city had the program going. By two thousand six, we created drop boxes outside of each station where people could come and get the life jackets out of the boxes, go use them and bring them back. But that still wasn't enough, we were still encountering a lot of incidents and, and mishaps that resulted in drownings. All these life jackets have been donated through several different organizations and, and thankfully, we've had that support through these organizations. Walmart, Sportsman's Warehouse, North Flat Wally's Unlimited, Abate Motorcycle Group, K2 TV and Radio, Wyoming Life Light. And we have people constantly coming by the station and just, hey, here's some life jackets. And so, there's a big support and a lot of donations that helps this program keep going. It really didn't get a lot of traction or attention until two thousand fourteen. And what happened in two thousand fourteen, the unfortunate drowning of Alex Cressy, Alex Cressy. And, uh, a young man drowned in our river and it, it really woke up the community that this is a big concern and we needed more involvement and education and efforts to prevent this from happening. Respect our River Committee formed with community stakeholders of Casper Fire EMS, Amoco Reuse Agreement Joint Powers Board, Flat Rivers Trails Trust, and they came together and said, we need to do something more. Let's get loner stations put throughout the community along the river. And, uh, ever since those installations, we haven't had a drowning since that. But every year prior to that, we were averaging about one drowning per year. Those locations are at Robertson Road, Riverbin Road, Morad Park, the Whitewater Park, and Lake McKenzie Park. So how do we stock these stations? Well, through, through all the donations that I've already talked about, all of these life jackets have to be distributed. So, um, we, we recruit mostly through social media, PSAs, and, and we ask for volunteers to help us get these stocked. This year, Cub Scout Pack one-six-seven stocked nearly every station between May and June. Our very own Captain Jan Henderson, she's very passionate and she's very involved and she, she really believes in this. She goes personally off-duty to make sure that these are stocked when there's volunteers to do it. So more help is always needed and always welcome. Some of the key players in the program, as I said, Captain Jan Henderson, Renee Hahn with Amoco Reuse Agreement Joint Powers Board, Deputy Chief Devon Garvin with Casper Fire EMS, and Angela Emery, Executive Director of Flat River Trails Trust. Our pro- program has challenges, the biggest challenge is, is after we distribute them, we don't get them all back. We start educating the public, doing public service announcements, social media, and, and information saying, if you use these, please put them back. But unfortunately, people use them and they don't put them back. We find them when we go on calls, we find them at garage sales, we, we get word of them down at Gwendol State Park. People use them and, and, and they don't bring them back. So that's just a constant battle we're, we're fighting to get more donations to keep up with, with that problem. As for twenty-twenty-two distributed stock and what we have left, what we've received back, we don't have those numbers yet, but what we put out was twenty-two infant, eighty-two youth, a hundred-and-seventy child, two-hundred-and-four adult, and seventeen super-large adult. And so, that's a pretty significant amount of life jackets distributed through those stations. You know, this, this was just a good opportunity to get this out there about the program, about the needs. We're always accepting volunteers, we're always accepting donations. Spread the word, let's, as a community, help us protect our people, so, um, with that, I'll take any questions.
Questions for the Fire Chief? Any comments? Hi.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, thanks chief for the presentation, I apologize, I might have missed it. The, um, purchase of the life jackets, the funding for that purchase, where does that come from?
Those are all donations.
Okay, so like the Cub Scout Pack?
Yeah.
When you say they stopped off a station?
They were volunteers to take the donations and put them at all the, all the different stations. And so, the donations are huge because they get expensive, especially when you're putting that many out a year.
Yeah, it's like a hundred.
Yeah, and a lot of them aren't coming back, so, um, it's a big financial cost, but, you know, it's, it's saving lives thankfully. And it's a, it's a good program, so.
Sure.
Are there, thank you, are there any standards of life jackets, um, that aren't accepted, or do you accept all donations?
Well, yes and no, there, we can't just accept anything that comes in. It, it's gotta be in good repair and it, it has to be up to date. A lot of the, the new life jackets, they have all the safety information in it, on it, how to put it on, how to wear it, who it fits. And if it doesn't have any of that information, you typically don't distribute stuff like... Likewise, we always make sure that the US Coast Guard certified. And then, sometimes people, when they sell their boat or whatever, they will donate those life jackets and they will go through and do a tear test on them and make sure that they're still in good condition because sometimes that stuff sits out in the sun forever and then that nylon wears out and it gets, you know, it's, it's not worth it, so um, we'll ditch those if those don't work.
Thanks.
Anybody else?
Most, I'm sorry, most of the donations we receive are new life jackets. Uh, we just received a hundred and three or a hundred and one life jackets as a donation.
Wow.
And they're currently at the printers getting longer and put on the backup. So, um, we'll have an inventory count, I'm hoping here in the next week or so, takes a little while to do all of them and sort them out size-wise and see what, what we actually ended up with this year, what kind of loss number we had. But, uh, we're really curious to, to see how this year turned out, we did a lot of PSAs on keeping them.
Could it be possible that we get an email to the Council on that inventory update?
Yeah.
It'd be great.
Thank you.
Lisa.
How do you pay for the printers?
That's through donations, um, Angela Emery at the Flat River, she keeps the, the money in the books that's donated. And so, when we get new life jackets, we reach out to her and say, hey, do we have money to do this? And then we'll go out and get this, I'm getting the, the lettering done and back.
Well, thank you guys for heading that up and, and working towards that, that it does. I remember when Alex had passed away from that tragic event, that it was certainly mobilized the community to remember that.
All we can do is educate and try and prevent, so.
Good.
Thanks, Chiefs.
Thank you.
All right, LWCF Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, we are mobilizing our efforts internally to prepare a grant for purposes of potentially rehabilitating to some degree Washington Park. In your memo, you saw a number of ways in which this grant could potentially be used. Uh, we're trying to figure out what that winning application might be or include. And so, from that standpoint, however, given that this does have some federal DNA as a part of it, as well as public involvement requirements and whatnot, we didn't want to move any forward at all without having you on board and understanding where we're at and what the process is. And so, uh, with that in mind, uh, we, we are also on a bit of a timeline as well. And hence the reason the, the timing is such that we're seeing you tonight before you see a, a resolution or whatever come forward uh, here soon. So with that, if I could turn some time over to Zalima to answer any questions that you might have uh, with respect to the, the requirements of this grant and what we have in mind, that'd be great.
Mayor, council members, good evening. Uh, as the City Manager mentioned, this is really just our opportunity to let you know of our intention to apply for a land and water conservation fund grant. Right now, our primary focus is on Washington Park. Mostly the reason being that we already have budgeted funding set aside for improvements at Washington Park, at the playground, on the tennis courts, and in other areas, and so, we're really hoping to leverage that existing funding, um, essentially double it in order to be able to create even more improvement in the area. And so, um, as the City Manager mentioned, we will do some public engagement. We plan to do two neighborhood meetings and a survey. We'll be talking to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, uh, about the project, um, just so that we can get more insight into what the priorities really should be. Uh, the number of improvements that are needed to really make that park sort of a, a flagship in our community for gathering people of all ages, all, multiple, um, sports and recreation interests. Um, the, the number that's needed is, is quite high. And so, likely it will have to be a phased approach to the project, a phased approach to, uh, the grant application. So we would likely end up submitting several grants over several years in, in order to get everything done that we'd like to achieve. But again, some of that will be determined by what our public input process shows as, uh, the citizens' priorities for the park. So, uh, with that, I entertain any questions that you have or suggestions or direction. Um, and then assuming that you all are comfortable with us moving forward with the application, uh, we will submit a resolution for your formal approval. It would have to be by mid-November in order to make the application go live.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, so in reading the, um, the packet, the information on it, there's a, a fifty percent match, I believe? And I'm assuming, I think you answered it, but the money that we already have allocated for that would be that matching money? I'm assuming so, it, it wouldn't cost the city anymore, is I guess.
Mayor, council member, yes, the intention is to leverage currently funded project dollars as well as donations, I mean, we have user groups that are very interested in the, uh, improvements that we're, we're hopefully going to be able to accomplish, and so, uh, we also hope to have donated funds. We also hope to have additional grants, non-federal grants, that could also be used as match, uh, and then in-kind also. Uh, in-kind services, uh, we've already had groups, um, reach out and say they would be willing to provide conceptual designs that we could use as in-kind service for match and those types of things, so.
Other questions for Zalima? Okay, great. Thank you, appreciate it. All right, monthly financial reports.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, we have mentioned that we were bringing forward a battery of reports for you to have at your access. Now that we've got our financial enterprise-wide system in place, uh, reporting and data gathering will be much, much easier and, and plentiful, if you will. Uh, we are at the point now where we have launched, um, uh, an access point on our website for these reports. And we wanted to give you that insight and heads-up, if you will, in the event that you wanted to start accessing those reports if you haven't been already. So with that, I'd like to turn some time over to Jill to kind of walk us through what data is available and how to, to do just this.
Jill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Um, I'm gonna kind of do a show and tell, so I'm pretty excited about this, this is the council coming out, so just, um, bear with me as I try not to use life accounting terms, so, um, this is, of course, the city's website. I just wanted to kind of guide you through where these are at and kind of give you just a structure of what they look like. I'm not gonna go through each individual, and we have thirty-three funds that each have a balance sheet and a, a revenue and expense. I mean, each one is, is set up pretty similar, but there's a lot of data out there, so, um, please take the time, some time, as you have extra time, which whoever has that. But if you do, please review them and let me know if you have any questions or reach out to the City Manager and we can certainly address whatever, um, questions you may have. So, um, just really quickly, I'm kind of standing in the middle, sorry about that. So, um, of course you go to Government, and we have our budget and financial documents. And then you have two ways to get to it, you can either, um, use the sidebar, you can do it here, or there, all the way at the bottom. So we would just click there. You'll notice we have both July and August here. Um, these reports are available to everybody starting on the twentieth day following the end of the month. So for the end of August, um, the reports would be available the twentieth of September. Okay? So again, these are all structured the same. The way that, um, most people would want to look at this is by a category of some kind. Because this is a large document, you'll see there's ninety-two pages of different funds and, um, different numbers, we did try and group these so that it would be easy to find the information. So, um, it starts out with all funds, so it kind of looks through that, but then it also goes through each individual fund. So if we were to start out with the general fund, just really quickly, at the top, it tells you how, um, far the financial, or how far into the year we are, so, um, sixteen percent of the year has, has, um, elapsed at that point. So that will help you as you start looking at where your revenue and budget and things like that is because it'll have that percentage on the side that you can compare. So, um, general fund is set up, balance sheet is always first. Then, of course, as we go down, people sometimes like numbers, sometimes they like a visual representation, so it kind of gives you a visual as well. This is revenue and expense. As you come down, for the general fund only, you'll see all the different departments. Uh, you won't see that in the other funds. And then as we continue down, um, this is your revenue and expense. And you have your cash at the end. And then, of course, again, you have a visual representation of year-to-date revenue, month-to-date revenue, um, year-to-date expenses, and month-to-date expenses. So each fund is set up the same way. Um, if you look at something like the enterprise funds, you're going to see all of the different funds. This is the balance sheet. Again, you're gonna see your revenue and expense in a visual representation, and then you'll see each individual fund. So they're all set up the same way, but please, if you have some time, um, look through it, see if you have any questions. And again, I'd be happy to, to answer anything that you guys see that you may have questions on.
Fantastic, Jill. Yeah, Steve.
Isn't a question, but go over and explain the fact about the sales tax business that you mentioned to us yesterday? Because I know that'll bring up questions to everybody else, I would believe.
Absolutely, thank you, um, these reports are done on an accrual basis, so when I, or a modified accrual basis. Um, so what that means for everybody who is not an accountant is that, um, the revenues are recorded when we earn them, not when we receive them. Just as the other side is, the expenses are recorded when we are legally obligated to pay it. So typically, we receive a service or we receive, um, something, an object, um, something we've bought. So at that point, the expense is recorded and then we eventually pay for it within the next three days. So that's what that means, so when we go back to sales tax, I'm gonna go to the general fund, actually. Because you'll notice our revenues are not really huge, and you're thinking, why not? Well, because, um, the sales tax that we receive, you'll notice there's, it's a zero. So the sales tax that we receive in July and August were actually earned in May and June. So the sales tax is actually booked back into the prior year. So you'll start seeing sales tax numbers start to populate, starting in September because that's when the July sales tax that we earn gets recorded into the books. So we do have a sales tax chart which looks very similar to our chart on the wall. So, um, you'll see that these are actually recorded when we receive them. So you should be able to follow this chart just like you do this one. Okay, these are unaudited as well, just to let you know that, we only do an audit once a year.
Any accounting questions you have for Jill? Steve.
One other thing that came up yesterday in the Finance Committee meeting is that our audit is going well. Everything is on schedule, we're not gonna be late. They seem to be doing a great job, our Finance Department has really liked working with those people, so.
And it's two-hundred-thousand dollars cheaper.
And it's two-hundred-thousand dollars cheaper, so, yes.
That's good.
But I wanted to pass that on, that our annual audit is going well, on schedule, so we ought to be in good shape.
Kyle.
Thanks, Mayor, no questions, Jill, thanks for the presentation. Just wanted a remark that I appreciate the work you and your department do to put this all together. I'm glad we published it on the city's website. Um, you know, I feel comments from citizens occasionally about government transparency and stuff. I feel like this is as transparent as you can get. Uh, we publish this on the city website, we publish our budget, we approve bill and claims over two weeks, so, um, this is in line with that goal of like utmost overall transparency, so I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any others? Thank you, Jill.
Thank you.
Gender review. You have anything, Carter?
I do not.
Anybody have anything for Carter, anything for the meeting tonight?
Uh, oh wait, no, for tonight, no.
No.
Thanks.
All right, we've got three minutes before the meeting starts, so, three minutes.
Good evening, before we begin, um, I'd like to remind everyone to please silence your cellphones. And that also, uh, council meetings are televised, it can be viewed on Channel one ninety-two. I now call the October fourth, twenty-twenty-two regular council meeting to order, all council members are present. At this time, I would ask the former Vice Mayor to please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, would you come up and say that for us, sir?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all...
Thank you, Mr. Freel. The Chair to entertain a motion to approve by minute action the minutes of the September twentieth, twenty-twenty-two regular council meeting as published in the Casper Star Tribune on September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Kathy, seconded by Councilmember Inga Brethson, any amendments? Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With all council members voting aye, the motion passes.
The Chair to entertain a motion to approve by minute action the minutes of the September twentieth, twenty-twenty-two executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Inga Brethson, seconded by Councilmember Pollak, any amendments? Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With all coun- council members voting aye, the motion passes.
The Chair to entertain a motion to approve by minute action the October fourth, twenty-twenty-two bills and claims is audited by City Manager Napier.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Inga Brethson, seconded by Councilmember Sutherland, any abstentions? Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With all council members voting aye, the motion passes.
Tonight, we are pleased to invite, uh, Fire Chief, uh, the Fire Chief Black and Deputy Chief, Fire Chief Garvin to discuss Fire Prevention Week, so if you guys would come forward, that'd be great. Would you mind? That's what my script said, chief.
Just, just real quick, uh, we, we asked for a proclamation for next week, obviously this is our regular work, work session. Um, next week's Fire Prevention Week, it's one-hundred years of fire prevention. Um, and, uh, we just requested that you do a proclamation announcing the...
Awesome.
The week.
So I'm gonna take a moment and I'll, uh, read the proclamation for Fire Prevention Week and I'll present that to the chief, so. Whereas, fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and the City of Casper is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city. And whereas homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk for fire, home fires caused two-thousand-five-hundred-and-eighty civilian deaths in the United States in twenty-twenty. And Fire Departments in the United States responded to three-hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand-five-hundred home fires. And whereas Casper residents who have planned and partic- practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas, City of Casper firefighters are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection, uh, protection education. And whereas, the twenty-twenty-two Fire Prevention Week theme is Fire Won't Wait, Plan Your Escape effectively serves to remind Casper it is important to have a home fire escape plan. Therefore, I, Ray Pacheco, Mayor of Casper, do by, do by proclaim October ninth through the fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two, as Fire Prevention Week. Throughout this city, and I urge all the people of Casper to plan and practice home fire escape and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of Casper's Fire Emergency Services. In witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the official... In witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of Casper, Wyoming, to be affixed this fourth day of October 22. I know this goes without saying, but we appreciate the effort and the work that you guys do, putting your lives on the line for our community, and we appreciate the work that you do for us to keep us safe in our community. So thank you so much, we appreciate it. Now is the time that we invite the audience who wishes to speak, anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to the council to come forward. As stated on the first page of the agenda, we ask the following. Please state your name and address, direct all questions and comments to the mayor and only the mayor. No personal attacks on staff or the council will be tolerated. Council will not respond to personnel matters, these will all be referred to our city manager. Questions posed by speakers may or may not be responded to by council members. Presentations are limited to five minutes, and there are no duplication of speakers. Please note that public hearings and ordinances have, have their own comment period, so please hold those comments until those items have gotten, we have gotten to those items. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Steve Freel, 211 West Collins Street. Wanted to come down and talk tonight. I noticed that the, on the minute action, that the Bearcat was pulled off and put onto a non-consent item, so just wanted to give you my two cents on it. Again, this is the equipment that the Police Department could use, and it's not a piece of equipment that you can say no to today, and then if you end up needing it tomorrow, or four hours from now, or whatever it might be, you, you can't unring that bell. That equipment won't be available. I'll remind you that last time, the last discussion that we had while I was on council about the Bearcat, I know we had a little bit of a disagreement between myself and another council member, but the point being is, after that council meeting ended, there was double homicide four hours later. Sheriff's Department had to take their armored vehicle out and take it out into ranch land where a suspect was running around, that had just killed two people, and they had to use that to extricate people out of ranches to get them to safety until they could find that suspect. So it's equipment that's needed. I look back in my career with the Police Department itself, and I would tell you that in the very early years, probably three-quarters of the way through my career, shootings between law enforcement and bad guys just did not happen. In the last part of my career, it happened a lot, and it's still happening, and Chief could probably get up here and give you a number on how many shootings they've been involved in this year. So again, it's equipment that's needed, and we really need to get away from the thought of, we don't want to be that community. You can go look at all the mass shootings that have taken place in those communities, guarantee you that they probably wish that they had the equi, you know, certain pieces of equipment that they didn't have at the time. So I just ask, I urge you, keep that in mind, that when you make a decision on this tonight, yeah, it's money that's got to be spent, but it's needed equipment, and if you don't have it when it's needed, you'll be thinking otherwise, so. That's about all I have to say on that, but I'm a hundred percent again, or for this, and certainly hope that you'll consider it, so, thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Freel? Thanks, Steve. Any others who wish to speak?
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Jessica Hastings, 1835 South Chestnut Street. I am here on behalf of the YO complex as one of the board members. Just wanted to provide an update on where we are at. In your packet tonight, you will see that we have provided our donors packet, our donors pamphlet, and just wanted to provide an update that we have gone out and started our fundraising campaign, and we're receiving just positive, very, very favorable responses from the community. We are continuing our design with state line architecture, and we're excited to release some of the drawings when we get to that point. But I just want to take a second and let you guys know that the fundraising is going very, very well, and just to say that tonight, to stand here with the opportunity to potentially bring this project to fruition is just an incredible and monumental place to be for this project and for Casper, the state of Wyoming, the region itself, and just thank you guys for considering this land as potentially the home for the Wyoming, or the YO Sports Ranch, so, thank you.
Any questions? Great. Thank you so much, appreciate it. Any others who should speak to council? Okay. We will move on, then.
Please read the consent agenda title.
Establish October 18th, 2022 as the public hearing date for consideration of an ordinance repealing and replacing Ordinance Number 16-97, codified as Chapter 8.08, Private Intrusion Alarms of the Casper Municipal Code.
Chair to entertain a motion to, by minute action, establish the public hearing date just read.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Humphries, seconded by Councilmember Pollock. Any abstentions or nay votes? Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With all council members voting aye, the motion passes.
I now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of new restaurant liquor license number 48 for Bluebird at the Cheese Barrel. Mr. City Attorney, do you have any exhibits?
Yes, Mayor, tonight we have four exhibits. Exhibit number one, correspondence from Fleur Tremont to Jay Carter Napier dated September 19, 2022. Exhibit number two, affidavit of publication is published in the Casper Star Tribune dated September 27, 2022. Exhibit number three, affidavit of website publication, as published in the City of Casper website dated September 19, 2022. And exhibit number four, liquor license application filed September 12, 2022.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, do you have a report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is the, the establishment known as the Bluebird historically, or the Cheese Barrel, depending on what part in history you may have interacted with this building located at South Center Street. The applicant is looking for a restaurant liquor license, which, as you know, allows for table service pertaining to alcoholic-type beverages. It is our opinion that the applicant has met all the statutory obligations and is ready to receive this, this opportunity of counsel, so desires.
Thank you. Council will now listen to public comment. Public hearing comments are limited to five minutes, and no duplication of speakers are allowed. At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of the new liquor, the new restaurant liquor license number 48 to please approach the lectern. Good evening.
Good evening, Council. Jackie Anderson, 544 South Center Street. I live above the Cheese Barrel, historic Cheese Barrel building. Wow, perseverance pays off. It's taken me a lot of hard work, blood, sweat, and tears to get to this point, so I thank all of you, I, from the bottom of my heart. Just some notes, you know, I've been asked by reporters and all that why I feel that I should get a liquor license. Well, first of all, it complements my very popular and successful breakfast and lunch and brunch menu. Also have the ability to contribute more to our local charities. That's been kind of hard. I was a restaurant, probably one of the only restaurants that opened during the pandemic of July 4th of 2020, so it's always been a little hard for me. We are limited on event space in Casper, so we do have the ability to host private parties up to seventy-five people. It's a hundred-year-old building, and so there's a lot of overhead. I've put a lot of money into it, especially in the last year, to keep it relevant. We have a lot of facade renovation that we want to tackle, and some infrastructure issues that we have with the building, that's going to cost us a pretty penny, so. And most importantly, it's going to give me the ability to pay my employees a better wage, and my servers are going to be making a better wage, and as you know, servers are always on the lowest tier of the labor pool in a restaurant, and it's going to complement everything that we desire to do. I'm also, I do performances for Art Core, so this will also complement that as well. So again, I thank you very much. Is there any questions?
Any questions for Jackie? I don't think so. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other individuals who wish to speak in favor? Okay, at this time, I ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to the new restaurant liquor license number 48 to approach the lectern. Any in opposition? There being no others to speak for or against the restaurant liquor license number 48, I now declare the public hearing closed. The Chair to entertain a motion to, by minute action, authorize the issuance of new restaurant liquor license number 48 for Blues Gypsy LLC doing business as The Bluebird at the Cheese Barrel located at 544 South Center Street.
So moved.
Moved by Vice Mayor, the Vice Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Sutherland. Any discussion, any discussion? Amendments? Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With Councilmembers Pollock and McIntosh abstaining, and all other members voting aye, the motion passes.
Former Vice Mayor Freel threw me off tonight with the name, so I apologize.
Well, I think it's a right brain. He used to mess with her.
Congratulations, Jackie.
Thank you.
Please read the ordinance on second reading by title only.
An ordinance approving a partial plat, vacation, replat, vacation of public parkland, and a zone change for the North Platte River Park Number Two subdivision.
Chair to entertain a motion to approve on second reading the ordinance just read.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Pollock, seconded by Councilmember Kathy. Council will now listen to public comment. Public comments are limited to five minutes, and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. Okay, any discussion? Amendments? Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With Councilmember McIntosh abstaining, and all other members voting aye, the motion passes.
Please read the ordinance on second reading by title only.
An annexation of two acres described as tract eight, dollar number two subdivision, 3025 Paradise Drive, establishing the zoning of said parcel as C2 general business, and rezoning 8.2 acres described as the Paradise Acres addition, 3041 Paradise Drive, as C2 general business.
Thank you. The Chair to entertain a motion to approve on second reading the ordinance just read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Vice Mayor Nell, seconded by Councilmember Ega Bretson. Council will now listen to public comment. Public comments are limited to five minutes, and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. Anybody wish to speak? Any discussion? Any amendments? Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With Councilmember McIntosh abstaining, and all other members voting aye, the motion passes.
Please read the ordinance on third reading by title only.
An ordinance correcting a Scrivener's error in the legal description of Ordinance Number 34-19 pertaining to the mistaken inclusion via annexation of the west half of lots 26 and 27, South Garden Creek Acres Number Two addition in the Casper municipal limits.
Thank you. The Chair to entertain a motion to approve on third reading the ordinance just read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Ega Bretson, seconded by Councilmember Pollock. Council will now listen to public comment. Public comments are limited to five minutes, and no duplication of speakers are allowed. Anybody want to speak? Any discussion? Amendments? Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With all council members voting aye, the motion passes.
Council will now consider consent resolutions. Please read the consent resolutions by title only.
11A1, authorizing a contract for professional services with Automation and Electronics Incorporated for the Casper Regional Landfill Cell Five, Leach Eight Controls. 11A2, authorizing a contract for professional services with Long Building Technologies Incorporated for construction services for the Ford Wyoming Center Flu Replacement. 11A3, authorizing the execution of a license agreement with the Neptuna County Board of County Commissioners for sanitary sewer main work. 11A4, approving amendment number one to the contract for professional services with Dynamic Controls Incorporated for installation and programming of access control on select doors at the Ford Wyoming Center. 11A5, authorizing the release of a local assessment district lien, LAD 156, regarding 1818 Fetterman Avenue, Casper, Wyoming. 11A6, authorizing the partial release of a local assessment district lien, LAD 153, regarding 1517 Fremont Avenue. 11A7, authorizing a memorandum of understanding concerning metro animal shelter services between City of Mills, Wyoming, and the City of Casper, Wyoming. 11A8, establishing a memorandum of understanding between the City of Casper and Neptuna County Public Library for Story Walk. 11A9, authorizing a ground lease agreement between the City of Casper and YO Complex, a Wyoming nonprofit corporation. 11A10, authorizing a right-of-way easement with Rocky Mountain Power for the Neptuna County School District Tennis Facility.
Thank you. The Chair to entertain a motion to adopt the consent resolutions just read.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Ega Bretson, seconded by Councilmember McIntosh. City Manager, would you like to comment on any of these items? Any abstentions or nay votes? Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With all council members voting aye, the motion passes.
Council will now discuss the minute action for purchase of a Lenko Bearcat Armored Tactical Rescue Vehicle. Because this is not on the consent agenda, it will be open for discussion by council. Please read the minute action title.
Authorizing the purchase of one Lenko Bearcat Armored Tactical Rescue Vehicle.
Chair to entertain a motion to approve the minute action agenda item just read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Vice Mayor Nell, seconded by Councilmember Ega Bretson. Mr. City Manager, do you have a report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. In a previous work session, council directed staff to negotiate a purchase agreement with respect to the tactical rescue vehicle that's in front of you this evening. That agreement was successfully negotiated in the sense that it certainly is within the budgetary limitations that council directed, and indeed is with regard to the features and so forth, as described. With council's potential approval this evening, this would be the final action necessary to make this acquisition happen if council should so desire.
Thank you. Now we'll open up for discussion. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. So I, like our former Vice Mayor, there must run in Vice Mayor blood, but I don't want to be in a situation where I wish we had one, or I'd rather have it and never use it and let it sit. But it'll be not only just for the city, it's going to be able to support our outlined communities as well, and I appreciate the, the due diligence that the chief did. I think he negotiated a really good deal on this, so hopefully the rest of the council's on board. I know we've had two deaths by policemen for people that pulled their guns and shot at our officers here recently, and I know those ranch people were saved by the use of the Bearcat that the county had. And so, so I look forward to hopefully putting that in. I'm not all about government control, and I certainly don't want us to live in a military state, but I damn sure want us to have this vehicle in the event that we ever need it. So that's all I have.
Councilmember Ega Bretson.
I am voting for this because same thing as Vice Mayor, whatever his name is. You know, it's, it's, the world has changed, and we have to change with it, whether we like it or not, the world is a different place. And our police officers are in the line of sight every single day, and if we can do anything to give them the tools that they need to be safe and protect the public, then I think we need to do that. So I am all for this.
Councilmember Gamroth.
Thank you, Mayor. All right. I'm going to have to apologize in advance. I know I have a reputation for speaking at length, and so that's why, in an attempt to be as articulate and clear as possible on my thoughts on this topic, I've written them out. Doesn't mean it's going to last, you know, any shorter amount of time, but I'll be a little more coherent than I usually am, so that's a plus. So first off, I just want to acknowledge all the valid points that have been raised by our own chief, former Vice Mayor Freel, and others, including my colleagues, who have advocated for this purchase. There is a lot of, in my opinion, legitimate justification to support its purchase. That said, I also. That said, I also think it's important to provide alternative viewpoints in order for us to come to the most informed decisions as a group. And so that's why I'm putting on my black hat tonight. I think it's important for us to consider this topic in the context of our most recent purchase of the Casper Business Center for the new police department. That was an eight million dollar purchase. It will require tens of millions of dollars of investment after it's all said and done, but it will position the department to be in a place where they are well housed, better equipped, and just generally in a better spot as a department overall. We've also, as a council, discussed adding SROs to schools. We've maintained the fleet replacement schedule. We've implemented grave study recommendations and other measures to ensure our police department is comfortable and well-equipped. Still a ways to go, no doubt, but we haven't told the chief no very often and certainly less often than some of the other department heads. It was mentioned at our August ninth work session that violence is on the rise. We heard from the chief about unofficial numbers of police-involved shootings over the past four years. And we heard from the vice, former Vice Mayor tonight, his perspective on officer-involved shootings during his tenure at the department. And this should be a concern, no doubt, no debate. It's a concern that we have more officer-involved shootings these days. And it is true nationally that murders and other violent crime have jumped by twenty to thirty percent since twenty nineteen, spiking during the pandemic. However, the murder rate was six point five per hundred thousand people in twenty twenty, which is about the same as it was in nineteen ninety-eight. And in nineteen ninety-one, it was nine point eight per hundred thousand people, which is about fifty percent higher. The contrast between those stats, those statistics is even more stark with just violent crime in general, which hasn't spiked as much as murder in recent history. I say that only to point out that nationally, we are much less violent than we were in the eighties and nineties, at least considering reported crime and how we are reporting that crime, which does change over time, granted. To understand the issue of armored vehicles and their impact on departments and the communities they serve, I did a lot of research. The chief mentioned the NT, the NTOA, but I could not find anything on the National Tactical Officers Association website on this topic other than one opinion piece, which didn't cite any research and some paid training programs on the effective deployment of armored vehicles, not the peer-reviewed academic-level research I was looking for. So elsewhere, I came across a twenty eighteen executive report titled "The History and Use of Armored Vehicles" by the Bloomington, Indiana Police Department. This was still anecdotal in nature, but a good illustration of the points that the chief made in defending his position that these sorts of vehicles save lives and protect officers during operations that require it. The most comprehensive resource I found was a study in the January twenty twenty-one Journal of Criminal Justice titled "Fatal Outcomes of Militarization: Reexamining the Relationship Between the Ten Thirty-Three Program and Police Studly Force." It examined all the notable research on this topic and ultimately concluded that gaps in data collection prevent any definitive conclusion being drawn in regards to the relationship between police departments using military equipment and its impact on police violence or criminal deterrence. The research focus is mostly on the U.S. Defense Logistics Agency's Law Enforcement Support Office Ten Thirty-Three Program that the chief spoke about during our August ninth work session. This is the military surplus dispersion program that opened up access for local governments to access military-grade equipment. So despite coming to no definitive conclusion, the studies examined did make some observations based on the data that was available. One observation found that acquiring tactical items decreased citizen complaints and crime in several categories, such as robbery, assault, and vehicle thefts. So that would be a positive. Another study found that participation in the Ten Thirty-Three Program introduced martial language in the departments where it was utilized, led to a willingness to engage in high-risk operations, and led to a higher likelihood to create PPU units. I've already taken a lot of time, so I don't want to delve into my research on harm reduction and how to reduce crimes like substance use and abuse, but the research in this area shows that the certainty of, certainty of being caught for a crime is more of a deterrent than the severity of the punishment. So not to go full broken windows theory here, but I believe that rather than investing our resources in ways to try to respond or mitigate the most serious crimes, I think we should continue our focus on infrastructure, which is deteriorating by every metric from what I've gathered during my eighteen months on council. And I think that's important to note because it's hard to take pride in your community if it looks and feels like it's falling apart. We should also focus on the social fabric that the nonprofits were talking about when they came in front of us for one cent. This could be exploring models like the Cure Violence Initiative or other community-based violence intervention programs. When those nonprofits were speaking to us, it's been a couple of months ago now at this point, I quoted Ben Franklin by stating "An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure." I think this quote is relevant again here tonight, and I'll share another one to further drive home the point I'm trying to make. Henry David Thoreau said "There are a thousand hacking at the branches of evil for everyone who is striking at the root." To me, upgrading the armor and weaponry of our police force is an attempt to hack at the branches. While the intentions are good, and that is to protect the lives of our officers, these efforts are reactive in nature, in my opinion, and in response to the crime, rather than an attempt to understand and prevent it from happening in the first place. That's why tonight I will continue to vote against this purchase while acknowledging there's plenty of good justification to support it. That's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you. Bruce, Vice Mayor.
That's okay. Bruce is fine. Those are all valid points and I, I will give you kudos for the research you did, certainly. But a couple of points that I picked up on when you were speaking is although we have done so much for buying a new police department, keeping them up in vehicles, doing all the things we do and pretty much saying yes to the chief all the time, none of those yeses we've given him involve safety, none of them. And this particular vehicle, for me, is all about safety and not just for our police officers, but for our community. I, I don't know how else we would have got in and got those people out of that ranch with a maniac running around with a live gun, with a long-range gun, actually. I don't know how we would have got them out without the armored vehicle. We got lucky that the county theirs was up and available at the time. Like I said, I, and I, and I agree with you also on the social intervention. I think that's the only way we're ever going to fix what's going on in our society. But what scares me the most and what I'm, what I'm going to tell you is I'm, I'm not a fear guy, but I'm, I'm more of a realistic person and I can tell you this recession that we haven't even started to come into yet is, it's coming and it's coming full bore and interest rates are going to get higher and jobs are going to become less. And it is proven throughout history that when that happens in our country, that crime explodes. And we're already seeing the tip of it now. It's going to get so much worse. And I'd, I'd much rather have this vehicle sit in the garage underneath the sheriff's department and never get used than need it and not have it. So that, that's just where I'm at. I, I respect you and I respect your views, but I'm fighting for this because I think our city needs it. I think our people need it and I think our police department needs it, so.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Some of you are old enough to remember the violent bank robbery in Los Angeles in the seventies where our police officers went in there and they were outgunned with automatic weapons. That was a pivotal point in the change of policing in our communities. We finally started saying that our police department needed to be better equipped than what the criminals were. And I hate to say it, but I agree with Vice Mayor. This is, we're just starting to see what's coming. I've lived in some very large communities and I hate to see it coming to Casper, Wyoming. I always, having grown up here, I always felt that Casper would always be a beautiful, perfect place to live. But unfortunately, we've seen a rise in criminal activity and, and I, Kyle has some, some great stats there and everything, but I, I feel that we definitely need this tool for our officers to keep the community safe and to keep our officers safe.
Councilmember Pollock.
Thank you very much. I think the only thing I'd add to the conversation, I, I, I tend to agree with Kyle in philosophy and I, I think that we should be doing a better job of addressing the root and putting more resources into that. But I also don't think it should be an either-or scenario necessarily. And particularly at this price point, it, you know, we're not talking millions of dollars that we're investing here. So I, while I appreciate that it, you know, is, is an expensive purchase, it's not, I don't find it to be outlandish knowing that any sort of investment that we make in prevention takes time to make an impact and to start to see any sort of fruits of those investments. And so, you know, I, I do think we should be mindful of it. And, and I would like to encourage the council to, to continue to work towards a more proactive approach, but I don't think that means that we have to say we're not going to invest in anything else or along the way to help with the symptoms that are immediate right now. So I'll vote yes tonight. But I, I do appreciate Kyle's perspective and would encourage us to continue to, you know, have, have that discussion when we're not considering purchases, when we're considering strategy and when we're considering, you know, longer-term what we want our community to look like. Thank you.
Councilmember Sutherland.
Thank you very much. I am not sure much of what I'll say will be novel, but I guess just to add my voice, I think I will also be supporting this tonight. I think that the evidence is clear that the both-and approach is the best way to tackle violence. So there's acute violence where people need protection and that's what this vehicle will provide to our officers. But to your points, Councilmember Gamroth, you're absolutely right. I mean, I personally and on this council advocated really strongly for our nonprofit monies to stay as intact as possible. And I think, to your point, Councilperson Pollock, there's a lot that we can do at the strategic level. And I think that part of our responsibility as a council is to look at where we're at and to not necessarily write our history in stone and to think about the trends and to go to the resources that we know can be productive in helping reverse them or improve them where we see them happening. So things could get bad, but they don't have to. And there's a lot of really good information out there that we can use to help inform the way that we make decisions here on this council and in our city to protect our citizens. So Kyle, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Gamroth, you mentioned Cure Violence. It's a well-respected, community-driven violence-reduction approach that started in Chicago and is now replicated to reduce violence globally. It's definitely something that we should consider looking at in terms of how we can engage in the community in a nonviolent manner that puts the priority on helping citizens get away from the, the, I guess, whatever it is that attracts them to violence in, in the first place. So, so we have resources. We do not have to submit ourselves to some terrible fate. And I have a lot of faith that we can do that. So I'm going to support it. But I'm also going to really advocate that we think strategically and that we do what we can to protect our, our, our people in a holistic manner.
Councilmember Kathy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And one of the advantages of going almost last is that it's all pretty well been said. So I am getting wiser in my older age. But it is a good thing and we do need to try to beef up our crime prevention. However, I feel like part of this goes back to the old adage of follow the money. And money is in drugs and crime right now and very big. The murders that were referenced by Citizen Frill were drug-related. A lot of the murders and actions going on now are drug-related. And until that issue is solved, crime is going to continue to go up. And what I just saw the other day, the, what, millions of dollars worth of fentanyl that was just seized, that kills people. So that is a whole nother issue, but I am fully in favor of this vehicle. And yes, I guess the one question you could ask is, would you rather be in that vehicle being shot at with a rifle? Or would you rather be behind a little personal shield being shot at with a rifle? I'll go for the Bearcat. So I'm going to vote for that. And thank you for all your information, Chief. And thank you, Councilwoman Gamroth, for your research and everything. I think that was good as well.
Councilmember Humphrey.
I can tell you guys all had a lot of excellent debate and conversation about this, so I'm just going to lighten it up a little bit. When do I get to go for a ride? And I want to drive it, just so you know.
Is there, is there an opportunity? Is there an opportunity?
No.
Then I vote no. I'm just kidding. I'm kidding. I'm kidding.
So I.
If you don't ask, you never know.
So I, I will be voting for and in favor of this as well. I think we, we have a systemic issue in, in not only the United States, but we have a systemic issue in Neptuna County and in Casper. And it's really kind of threaded with fentanyl. We're seeing a major, major uprising of fentanyl. And the issues, a lot of the crime, a lot of the violence that we're seeing is based on that. Right now, we have two providers in our community that can do detox. And those two require insurance, so there's not even an opportunity for those that they're, that are in the indigent, indigent population to get detox. So we are faced with a systemic issue. I don't think we're going to police our way out of these types of things. I don't think we're going to arrest our way out of these types of things. But I think the balance is going to be, how do we work together, both on a sociological standpoint as a community, to face these, but also protecting our police officers so they're able to do their job. And it's going to be a balance. But we have a lot of work ahead of us. And for us to say not to get the Bearcat, that's going to solve our problems, or to buy the Bearcat, it's going to solve our problems. It's just not going to be that way. It's not that simple. But we have to have a middle ground to say, how do we work together to infuse those two and be able to put those? And I think Kyle, Councilman Gamroth made the good point of saying, how do we do that? And that's the conversation that we have. I'm supporting it because it's also been a standard that we've had. We've had one before. It's not like we're just buying it for the first time and we're just going to have it. We've had one here in Casper. So it makes sense that we've had that. It's not setting a precedent. It's not as if we're saying, hey, we're creating this militaristic city. We've had one before. So it's not a precedent. So for me, it's not a stretch to be able to do this and have this conversation. So with that being said, we have a lot of work to do as a city. And we need to do that as a community in order for us to face these issues that we have. So. Any amendments? Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With Councilmember Gamroth voting nay and all others voting aye, the motion passes.
Thank you. Please read the consent minute action title.
Authorizing appointments to the council boards and commissions to fill vacancies left by council member resignations.
Chair to entertain a motion to approve the consent minute action agenda item just read. Moved by Councilmember Sutherland, seconded by Councilmember Ega Bretson. Any abstentions or nay votes? Please cast your vote. Please record the vote. Please record the vote.
With all council members voting aye, the motion passes.
At this time, we ask council members to bring forward relevant concerns or items of interest. We'll start with Councilmember Pollock.
Thank you very much. I attended an orientation for the Regional Water Board that I am now a member of. So I'm feeling much more up to speed on that position and look forward to continuing to work with that group. I think that's the only update I have about any, any boards since we last talked. Thank you all very much.
Councilmember McIntosh. Great. Councilmember Sutherland.
A lot of what I was going to mention was covered in our pre-meeting, but I guess just for the purposes of reiterating, if that's necessary. We had a finance committee meeting yesterday where we learned that our audit is going to be completed on time, which is really great news. Sounds like everything's going well and the new organization that we're working with to complete that has been great to work with. So all good things there. And then also just going to say that our monthly financial reports are available online. They are automatically generated. They are not interfered with by the city. So hopefully that helps meet our community's expectations of transparency and access to information as it relates to the money side of our operation.
Councilmember Kathy.
I attended that same finance committee meeting yesterday and it was brought up in the pre-meeting that basically those financial reports are based on an accrual basis. So don't anybody panic when you see that we have had no revenue from sales tax for July and August because the payment, the payments for those run two months behind. So the money that we received in June on our sales tax chart that everybody sees was actually the money that was accrued in April, trying to back up. Trying to back up. And the same way then for the money that we received in July was the money for June, so those, I'm sorry. Anyhow, they're two months back, and so those first two months of, of July and August were May and June's tax money, so they wound up going back onto the FY22. You will start seeing sales tax money accrued next month, which will then be July's tax money, so that will always be two months behind. So finally think I got that out right. Also, there was CNFR meeting yesterday evening. Everything seems to be on schedule there, and I do want to say to the public that thank you to our Judge Parks. He was a member of the board, and he has officially resigned now and has moved on to, to other activities, but we, the community should thank him for his work on the CNFR board.
Thank you. Councilmember Humphrey.
Thank you. I think you're honored.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Gamroth.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one thing. Dane Anderson, he's one of the founders of the Casper Firefighters Pipes and Drums Band, and he's also the Public Information Officer at Casper Fire and EMS. He's been doing Throwback Thursdays on their Facebook page. There was a recent Oil City News article published on it, so if you're interested in the history of Casper and its firefighting department, I would encourage you to check out that article and follow their Facebook page, not only for the throwback material, but also they do a really good job with their public-facing messaging about the incidents they're responding to and stuff like that, so I'd encourage you to follow that page. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Inga Bretson.
I attended the finance committee meeting as well, and then also today, the Hall of Justice and the Detention Center. I just, and I also want to note that October is Domestic Violence Prevention Month and/or Awareness Month, and so the city hall here is having, for Domestic Violence Awareness Month, the public is welcome at 10:00 a.m. on Thursday morning, and so I welcome the public to join me Thursday morning at 10 o'clock to join this.
Vice Mayor Nell.
Wow. Thank you. I've got a few things. Next week, at the work session, I, I would ask you, if you get a chance to tune into that, we, in the finance committee meeting, we learned about just how little the city gets off of our 4% sales tax revenue. It was actually quite shocking. There's an example that I'll present next week, where during CNFR, when we bring in $14 million to the city and we actually lose money in sales tax revenue, because this, the, the people that make the money are the business owners, so you'd be really shocked at, at what little amount of, of sales tax revenue the city gets. It was, it was really shocking, because people think that that's, that's the cat's meow, and it's just not. So also, we, tonight, we established a public hearing for alarms, which I've been getting a tremendous amount of emails for. People are upset because if they have home alarms and, and they don't want to be fined, and what, I think what they need to understand is, over, over 6,000 alarm calls that our police department got last year, 92% of those were false alarms. What that does is it wastes a tremendous amount of our officers' time and resources, and it also sets our officer up, when he's going back to a place of business for the 20th time that day on a false alarm, and he's just thinking he's got another false one, and then something really happens, so it's, it puts him in a really dangerous situation. Not everyone's alarms need to call 911, so there's several ways to get around this. You can have it alert your phone, and then you can go and look on your cameras before you call the police, or whatever. There, there's a million ways around it, but we've got to get this strain off of our police department and our resources. It's, it's getting just ridiculous. 6,000 calls and 92% are false.
Ninety-nine point two.
Ninety-nine point two? Thank you. So we've got to do something about it, and we're talking to these business people and these homeowners who, who are habitual offenders. They're not fixing the problem. So now we're in a situation where we're going to help you fix it, or it's going to start costing you money. And I, I think it's reasonable, I think it's, it's fair to hold them accountable. So I hope you'll come and debate that with us when it gets set up for the public hearing. Earlier tonight during the pre-meeting, if you didn't get a chance, the chief and deputy chief gave us some information on the life jackets, and that, that was very interesting, and, and how people are donating those, and they're available for use. And since that program has been in full swing, we haven't had one drowning on a river, so I would say that that is an extremely successful campaign they've undergone, so we appreciate you guys for that. Kudos to the Wyoming Sports Complex. You had, now have your ability to sign a lease with the land, and I am super excited for the city, the state, the regional and national competitions that we'll be able to have because of that building are measurable, so I'm, I'm so excited, and don't forget to send me a donation slip, because I'll be helping as well. The drug situation was talked about earlier, and, you, you know, I just lost a former employee last week to drugs, and sadly, I know, but, you know, I remember 15 years ago, when we used to talk about cancer, and it was all new kind of at that time. Nowadays, I don't think there's a human being in this room that doesn't know someone affected by cancer, and I think we can now say the same thing about drugs. You either know somebody, or you're related to somebody that has had a run-in with them or was affected by them somehow. So I'm with Amber, I'm with Kyle, I think somehow we've got to find the resources and the brain power to get together and try to start curbing this stuff for the greater good of our community. I'm going to push one more time for the, for the Poplar and CY situation. I understand that's a state highway, but I witnessed another accident this morning. That's the fourth one this week, and I lost my cookies last week while I was trying to explain about the little girl, that a man actually ran into another car to stop the car from hitting the little girl that he never saw. And Lander just had a little girl run over at a crosswalk. These intersections going south on Poplar, crossing CY to Walgreens, where that street goes nowhere, and I hope, if you guys know where I'm talking about, if you're going south on Poplar and you come up to CY, and Walgreens is right there, there's that extra lane that goes nowhere, and everybody gets in it and they hot-rot at 5:00 at night, fighting to merge, and they're merging in the middle of an intersection. And if we don't do something about it, somebody's going to get hurt worse than they already are or get killed. I don't know what it's going to take to get people to the table, but I'm going to keep bitching until we get that intersection fixed. That's all I have, and thank you very much for my long-winded expose.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. Last week, I gave a proclamation at the Gear Up Program, which is a college prep program for kids that struggle economically, so that was a delight. I used to run that program, so I did that. Also, last week, I was at the Habitat for Humanity advocacy meeting, conversation. Former Vice Mayor was there with me, we had lunch. They chatted a little bit about affordable housing and some of the issues surrounded around, surrounded around that, and affordable housing that we're, we're facing, which is true, albeit not, not understanding how exactly we can face that problem head-on, but the good conversation is that we had. Also, this week, I will be at the Domestic Violence Awareness Month. I'll do a proclamation on Thursday, so with Councilmember Inga Bretson, I invite you to come to that about 10:00, 10:00 a.m. It's only going to be probably about half an hour, so please join us for that as well. Finally, I had an opportunity, I got to speak at a breakout session for the LIFT Conference, which is for youth. I know Anna was there and several other high school students, and so I had an opportunity to present a problem in our city that they could try to address. So it's about 23, 24 students in the breakout session, and I presented them the fentanyl problem, which was the issues of the detox center that's, we, we just don't have the funding to give the people that don't have insurance be able to detox. So it was delightful conversation in the sense that they came up with some issues surrounding that and how to deal with it, but I think that's a conversation that's going to continue to, to keep rising as we continue to have issues and crime surrounding that, and issues around fentanyl and other substance abuse issues. So it was good to have young people do that. I've said that, and I will never back off of this, but I've said this, my hope lies in this generation, in Generation Z, and they have the opportunity to be a great generation to make this difference, and I'll continue to say that until they prove me wrong. And so you guys are doing an amazing job. I'm glad, Anna, you got a chance to go to that, Anna's in our Casper Youth Council, so thank you, appreciate that. Thank you for coming to, from your class, for the American Government Class. We appreciate you being here and listening to the conversations. Please reach out to any one of council members if you have any questions, thoughts, concerns, or anything like that, okay? And good luck. That was my favorite class in, in college, too, so. The next meetings of the city council will be a work session to be held at 4:30 p.m. Tuesday, October 11th, 2022, in the council meeting room, and a regular council meeting to be held at 6:00 p.m. Tuesday, October 18th, 2022, in the council chambers. A notice of an executive session to take place at this date and during this meeting was given. We have matters to discuss regarding personnel and litigation and land acquisition. The chair to entertain a motion to approve into, entertain a motion to adjourn into an executive session, and at the conclusion of that executive session, to reconvene this regular meeting solely for the purposes of adjournment of this regular meeting.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember, Councilmember Sutherland, seconded by Councilmember Pollak. There being a majority of members present, and a motion to adjourn into an executive session having been moved and seconded, and that motion requiring a two-thirds majority of the council present, please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With all council members voting aye, the motion passes.
A greater than two-thirds majority of the council present voted in favor of the motion. We are hereby adjourned into the executive session.